Good evening, welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, August the 13th. And Mike Urban, who's filling in for D tonight, please take role.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
And Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, it's not every day we get to celebrate the opening of a new school, so don't miss the Cameack Elementary School ribbon-cutting open house this Thursday, August 15th at 6:00 P.M. And we have the award-winning National Lento Festival Friday and Saturday, August 16th and 17th. Uh, Blue's Pride will be next weekend, August 23rd to the 25th. Bingo on Friday, festival and drag show on Saturday, and brunch on Sunday. You can visit inland oasis dot org for more information, and it'll all be held at the East City Park in Moscow. Also, Pullman Parks and Recreation offers summer fun, including Wednesday concerts, Raney Park, August 14th will have solstice there, and food vendor begin serving at 5:30, music starts at 6:00. Raney Park Pool is open through August 18th, may even be a little bit longer, uh, what we're hearing now because of some issues with the contractor and the pool liner, things like that. Uh, music on Main every Thursday from 6 to 8 o'clock in downtown Pullman, in the High Street Plaza near Main and Grand. Everyone is welcome, music is free, and bring the whole family enjoying music performed by area artists. And of course, we have the Fresh To You Farmers Market, open through October 16th, Wednesdays, 3:30 to 6:30, at the Brunswick WSU Visitor Center. Those are the announcements tonight. Our presentation, first of all, tonight comes the Police Department's Annual Report. With that is our Police Chief, Gary Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before I start with the annual report, there are a couple of items I was asked to speak about. Uh, the first is, uh, save the date for September 11th, we're gonna be, uh, putting together a memorial ceremony at City Hall between, um, 7:30 and 8:00 in the morning, and that will include both police and fire and Mayor Johnson. So the other item I was asked to speak about, um, was how we prepare for events such as Lento Festival, from, uh, the law enforcement perspective. So I'll answer that question, uh, in two ways. First, there's a long-term preparation that we do, and that's all of the training that our officers undergo, uh, throughout the year and from year to year. And that includes, uh, regular active shooter training, uh, we have in-house instructors that are certified to provide that training to our staff. Um, we've also been, um, training with the Pullman Fire Department in what's called a rescue task force, uh, type of operation, and what that involves, it's the most recent technique used to respond to active shooters, and it allows, uh, paramedics and fire personnel to get into what we'd call a warm zone, where there's not an active shooter actually present, but it's still a little bit dangerous. Um, but, uh, what they found in previous shootings is that there were a lot of victims who succumbed to their injuries, uh, while they're waiting for medical care. And so if we can get them medical care, uh, sooner, then that would save a lot more people. And so, the last couple of years, we've been training with the fire department on those techniques. And then, um, and as well as we, we keep in touch with our, uh, regional law enforcement partners, including federal agencies, uh, that are involved in intelligence gathering, and we do receive and exchange information with them. Uh, short-term preparation for every significant event, we prepare what's called an incident action plan, where we lay out all of our personnel and resources, um, all of our, um, contingency plans, and, uh, and scenarios, and what to do in different types of events. We also share that plan with all of our local, uh, law enforcement and emergency management partners. And then just providing, uh, a presence at events, uh, provides some deterrence, and also gives us the ability to respond and react immediately if there were an incident. Uh, and then we also monitor social media, which sometimes, uh, is good to find, uh, some information about some things that people might be planning to do, um, or, uh, something that would be beneficial for law enforcement to know. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that before I move on to the annual report.
Uh, more of a comment. Having been a part of the active shooter here at City Hall, I believe it was last year, that was a, such an important, um, important training, not only for myself, but I know for the staff as well, and I know you've done it at the library, which I heard was, uh, very successful as well, so I just wanted to thank you for doing those trainings, and definitely puts me at more ease, so.
Good, and I'll, I'll mention too, for the public, that we do provide that for businesses in town, uh, and we're available to come out and provide training to, to the staff.
So now, you're on your report.
The annual report. So I provided council with, uh, our, uh, annual report. Uh, I'm not gonna go over everything, I'm just gonna highlight a few items. So, we'll start on pages three and four. Uh, regarding the crime statistics, the FBI is responsible for reporting the crime in the U.S., and by the end of 2021, they're gonna be requiring all law enforcement agencies to transition from the Uniform Crime Reporting, or UCR, to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, or NIBRs. As of 2017, only 43% of U.S. law enforcement agencies were NIBRs compliant. The state of Washington is currently 99% compliant, and Pullman PD has been NIBRs compliant since 2006. So this is something you may be hearing about nationally, about agencies trying to get up to speed on NIBRs, uh, so just know that we're already compliant, as well as most, most of Washington is as well. Uh, on page four, there's a table comparing Pullman to statewide changes from 2017. Uh, you'll see that we saw an increase in crimes against persons, but a decrease in all other crime, and an overall crime, uh, decrease of 18.5%, compared to the 0.7% statewide. Page five, a table of reported crimes, uh, is divided into three categories, and this is, uh, in the NIBRs reporting, they divide it into persons, property, and society. Um, forcible sex offenses were at an all-time high in 2018. Uh, our biggest number, uh, crime-wise is larceny or theft, and vandalism is the second highest, and both of those are down, and so, uh, our overall crime numbers are, uh, very influenced by both larceny and vandalism cases. So our overall clearance rate is at an all-time high as well. On page six, there's a chart and a graph showing those Group A crimes. Uh, the crime data shown accumulatively is with the bar chart, and each category is shown, shown separately with the line graph. Overall, our Part A crimes have been trending down since 2015. On page seven, the top third of that table lists the top 12 calls for service. These are calls that occupy a lot of our officers' time, that are not part of those Group A crimes, with the exception of theft. Uh, these are what I would call quality of life calls that we can respond to, uh, because we do have a relatively low crime rate. Calls that are trending up are disturbance, disorderly, and dispute calls, airport security, parking problems, welfare checks, and those that are trending down are animal-related and alcohol-intoxicated related. Although our overall calls for service are down from last year, they're still the second highest on record. Uh, some of the numbers in the rest of the tables, uh, are impacted by staffing, as more staff can generate more productivity, such as parking and traffic infractions and warnings. On page eight, uh, there is information about response times. This is the first year I've been able to report on response times. Uh, our technology specialist, Brendan McNanny, has worked very hard to export the, uh, correct data, uh, to come up with some, um, what we think are, um, very valid response times. Uh, we've excluded outlier times, and so, uh, and also we've taken just a percentage, um, we've taken off the top percentage, uh, of the calls, so that we don't have any outliers in there. We divided all the calls into four categories. Emergency, which would be like a code-three call, urgent, immediate, and non-urgent. Uh, and I provided examples of those types of calls in the table. So the line graph and bar chart show the average response times for each year shown. Um, I wouldn't expect to see too much variation from year to year on the, um, the emergency and urgent calls, because those are the calls that the officer, no matter what is going on, they will leave what they're doing and go to those calls. So those call, uh, response times should stay fairly consistent. But we are seeing, um, an up, uh, an upward trend in both the immediate and non-urgent calls. And also you'll see, uh, with the bar chart, the cumulative response times, those are all trending up. The response times are mostly impacted by staffing, volume of calls, and types of calls officers are handling. For example, a mental health element on a call can type an officer for a number of hours, reducing the amount of staff available to respond to other calls. Page 12 is training. Uh, we place a lot of emphasis on training. Uh, training makes our staff more competent, professional, and effective. I view training as an investment in our people. It's worth noting, on average, that officers received nearly three times, uh, the amount of training required by the state in 2018. Page 13 is our DARE and School Resource Officer Program, that continues to be very popular with not only the students, but also with parents and school officials. Page 14 is the Quad City Drug Task Force, a regional drug task force. Staffing levels in 2018 didn't allow us to actively participate with a full-time person in the task force in 2018, but we did continue delays on with them and exchange intelligence. Page 16 starts, uh, other programs, excuse me. Uh, airport security, we provide the federally mandated law enforcement presence for outgoing commercial flights. Uh, as the airport grows, we'll need to ensure we have the capacity to maintain the mandated presence. Page 18, uh, the Prescription Drug Collection Program continues to grow from year to year. Also on, on page 18, you'll see in the public records requests, that we have seen a decline in public records requests since 2016. Uh, in 2016, legislation was passed that reduced, um, the requirement to release body worn camera video, uh, for a lot of circumstances, restricted who could get that video, and that appears to be what contributed mostly to that decline. Um, so that was, uh, and I know, I know that was one that City Council, uh, was active in, uh, supporting that legislation, so this, this shows that the results of that.
With the help of the Association of Washington Cities.
Yes. Uh, on page 20, website and social media. Our social media continues to grow from year to year. Uh, we found a very effective way to communicate and exchange information with the public, as well as to humanize police officers. Uh, all of our social media outlets grew from 2017 to 2018. Page 21 is outreach. Well, I think we do a fair job with our current staffing levels, but as we add more staff, our capacity for community outreach, outreach will increase. Uh, maintaining and enhancing community trust is critical to crime prevention and solving crime, which both require community cooperation and support. Page 24, Police Advisory Committee, has been very active and vibrant. In 2018, the committee membership reached the fewest number of constituency vacancies. And lastly, I'll point out a couple of the significant events. Uh, January was the Tyler Helensky suicide, and October was ESPN College Game Day. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the annual report.
Questions or comments? An excellent report. I really enjoyed reading all of it, and it was a lot of great detail there on this report. Nathan?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks, Chief, this is, I love the data. So I'm expecting here, I know with the Pullman Police Department, it says, uh, drug narcotic offenses between 2012 and 2013, uh, significant decrease. I'm expecting that's the, uh, has to do with marijuana legalization?
Yes, when marijuana was legalized, well, of course, all the marijuana, or most of the marijuana offenses, uh, no longer existed, so, uh, that, that did have a huge impact on those numbers.
In relation to that, I know, um, the Quad Cities Drug Task Force had, uh, seized MDMA, what, into 2013, but then there's no data after 2013, I believe it is. Can you explain?
MDMA?
Yeah.
Okay, on the bottom?
Yeah.
Um, I can't, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm looking above, there should be numbers, because they did, um, have some cases in 2015 and 2018, uh, involving MDMA. So I don't know if they just had some cases that they didn't, um, seize any MDMA, but they had some sales, uh, that they could, with an undercover informant. Uh, that's likely what happened, since there's no actual amount of MDMA.
Okay. Appreciate your answer to that. Just a follow-up, uh, you said that sexual assault statistics, uh, have increased, that they're the highest levels we've seen in the, in the data here. Do you have any kind of thoughts on what might be a driver for that statistic?
I think, uh, most of the increase is due to the improved efforts of the university to, um, educate their, uh, students, particularly incoming students, and, uh, I think students, uh, overall feel more comfortable reporting those types of crimes, and have a lot more support. I don't necessarily think we're having more of those types of crimes, I just think we're having more reported to us, which, on the surface, doesn't look like it's good, but I think it is a good sign that we're having more people report.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Brennan?
Um, Chief, good report, I really appreciate it. I think you know that I, I think the world of what you're doing. I think the community outreach that you're doing is unparalleled. I mean, I, I have not seen many police departments that engage as positively with the community as, as Pullman Police. Um, I will later be bringing something up, uh, but I'll ask the question now. Um, so, so one thing that's not in here, but is consistently in the police weekly recaps, um, and I'd love to get your take on this. So, I just pulled three samplings, traffic stops 90, traffic infractions 4, traffic warnings 86. Um, I don't like to get a ticket either, but I do know that mine talks, and one of, one of these other ones, traffic stops 139, traffic warnings 120. Um, so, how, how much latitude is, is up to the officers themselves to simply give warnings, and, and, you know, at what point do we say, look, you know, if we wanna curb some of the behavior without being too overbearing, you know, when do we decide, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna actually issue a citation for, for that speed?
Well, the officers have a lot of discretion, uh, when to issue a citation or a warning, and, um, of course, our sole objective is compliance, and so, the decision to issue a citation versus a warning is based whether they feel, uh, a citation is necessary to achieve compliance versus a warning. I will say that our, uh, percentage of, uh, traffic stops to, or, uh, infractions issued to traffic stops is higher in 2018 than it was in 2017. Um, so, uh, we are issuing more percentage-wise. And I think, uh, when we have particular areas that we have, uh, we're having a specific problem, um, it definitely serves, uh, the public well, if we take a more strict enforcement approach on those areas. Uh, but warnings go a long way, too, so it's really, uh, there's a lot of discretion up to the officers, um, but if we're doing a particular focus, then we would give direction to issue more infractions.
But you'll also, when the officer pulls somebody over, they also hear if they had a warning previous, and they also can see it on their computer as well, so that also influences, and whether they get a citation.
Correct, yeah, previous warnings definitely would influence that decision.
Any other comments or questions?
I will, one.
One more.
Um, the prescription drug, uh, take back, that is just.
Fantastic.
That's, yeah, that is just great, so I applaud yours, the department's effort with that, that is impressive.
And Public Works has joined with us the last few news releases, uh, because it definitely impacts their operation as well.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Awesome.
All right, with that, thank you very much, Gary, appreciate it. We now move to item D in the agenda, this is consent agenda, these items are considered routine in nature, and do I hear a motion read by title?
Second.
Move to second, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with that, Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council. Your consent agenda consists of the following items. Number one, a motion to dispense of the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 6, 2019, and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve disbursements represented by electronic transfer, 7252019, totaling $69,493.76. Item three, a motion to approve disbursements represented by accounts payable checks numbered 96748 through 96820, totaling $163,358.27. Item number four, a motion to approve disbursements represented by accounts payable checks, number 96821 through 96891, totaling $3,42,244.05. Item five, a motion to approve disbursements represented by accounts payable checks, number 544 through 548, and 96892 through 96915, totaling $1,031,939.72. Payable checks numbered 74832 through 74864, totaling $51,451.83. And electronic transfers, 56127 through 56454, totaling $945,128.47. Item six, a motion to approve the football agreement between WSU Athletics and the city of Pullman for the provision of emergency medical services at home football games. Item seven, resolution R-57-19, a resolution authorizing the assignment of a previously executed engineering service agreement between the city of Pullman and the Ingenuity Systems LLC of Hood River Engineers, Inc., for the purpose of designing the Pullman Aquatic Center HVAC upgrade project. And item number eight, ordinance 19-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Pullman, Woodman County, Washington, establishing additional no-parking, stopping, or standing limits along the west side of Northwest Terror View Drive, between main driveway entrances associated with Cameack Elementary School, and other matters properly related thereto.
Is there any item the council would like off for discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through eight, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda. First item is a public meeting to take input on the possibility of establishing a temporary moratorium on new construction in the Central Business District as defined by the BBS study. And since this matter was proposed by Councilmember Al Sorensen, I asked Al if he would summarize that in like, in about a minute or two, and then we'll take, uh, public input.
Okay, thank you. So just to, to reconfirm what I was bringing up, uh, in regards to a temporary new construction moratorium in the Central Business District only, uh, was for a number of reasons, and if any of you watched the meeting when I proposed this, uh, you could get all the information there. And there are a lot of rumors and different things going on out there, uh, that are not part of what I suggested. The idea here is, is that the city of Pullman has hired a consulting firm to help us create a master plan for our central business district downtown as defined in that, uh, plan, right? Um, and that is the only area that I suggested, that we slow down and wait until we get the plan back, the results, and that we have time to talk about it as a council and, and public, uh, so that we can move forward with making sure that our downtown Pullman, uh, stays, you know, charming and, and, uh, and is a place that we all wanna be at and go to, and not just have, uh, large, uh, concrete-only-type buildings built in downtown. Uh, we have a very small downtown area, and we, as a council, decided that we wanted to create a plan for that, so that it's a place that's inviting for people to come to, and, um, you know, make it look good and, and interesting for families and everybody else in town. So, the whole idea behind this was for us to just slow down for a minute, we've already hired the consultants, they're in the middle of their project, let's just wait for a little bit, till we get that back, before we allow any new construction, which means you can remodel your building, that's fine. Projects not in the defined Central Business District, build a new building. This is only the little core area of downtown that I was talking about. So that's where I was coming from with all this, is I thought that we just needed to kinda slow down for a few months, wait until our, uh, consultants finish their work, and then go from there.
Okay. And after Al proposed that, the council said, uh, we'd like to take public input, and so that's what we're doing tonight. So, the way the rules are, is that you have a maximum of three minutes to give your testimony. Please identify yourself for the record, there's also a booklet over there we'd like you to sign. Then I'll hold up a sign that says like, one minute, 30 seconds, and then the big one that says, "Time's up." Okay, so, that's the way we'll do it. So anybody would like to make their comment on the proposed moratorium for the downtown Central area, this is the time to go up here to our podium. And we'd appreciate, you know, if you have one up there, let's have another one standing by, so we can move through this as quickly as we possibly can. Naturally, a speedy bicycle owner is gonna be in here first, okay? So please identify yourself for the record.
So, I'm Bryce Erickson, I own B&amp;L Bicycles Downtown, and the building, and I am in favor of the proposal here, um, due to the fact that, for the same reasons that Al spoke, is they're in the middle of the consulting process, and it seems like it would be a good time to kind of wait till we see what's the results are of that, and then, um, go forward from there. So, I'm just saying that I'm on the record for supporting it.
Thank you, Bryce. Next, please.
My name is Willow Falcon, um, I'm also a business owner downtown, I own Nashi's, Glastonbury, and the building that it's in, and I'm in favor of the planning process, I'm not in favor of a moratorium. Um, I think, um, I think the city knows that as time goes on, the prospects of a building project cost, the costs go up, maybe. I, I think I read in the newspaper this morning that the City Hall plans bid was over budget, and that happens with time. So, a short moratorium may mean a 20% increase in cost, and that, as a business owner, a property owner, might, might be a little bit offensive, and what I wanna know is what the emergency situation is. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm in favor of the planning process, I'm in favor of keeping our downtown wonderful, and improving it in a lot of ways, and I'm definitely gonna take active parts in that, as time goes on, but, um, uh, I just want the city to be cautious of the message that it sends to developers. Um, there's a lot of development going on in this town, in neighboring towns, in bigger towns, all over the country. Development is boom or bust, and we're in a boom, to put the brakes on that, is potentially sending a message to, to people that, uh, well, I don't know, just that rules can be changed for maybe no reason at all. I'd like to know what the reason for the moratorium is, aside from lack of planning. Um, I think I've heard a phrase, "Lack of planning on one's part should not constitute an emergency on my part." Those, that sums up my concerns, I think, without going on too long, um, and, go Pullman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Scott Macbeth, 1120 Southeast Spring. So, the rumors, um, are growing in Pullman quite a bit, but how long till we actually get the consulting, uh, report? Do we have any idea of?
Devin, you have it?
Uh, the design shrap process will be in October, and then the consultant's supposed to wrap up their work in January.
So we're not talking years of delay for construction? I think if we're paying someone to help us make our city debt better, um, I would like to wait and see what they have to say before we go forward. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Next, please. And if there's someone who'd like to be next after that, please come on up.
Hi, my name's Allison, I'm a graduate student, but I previously worked for the Downtown Association. Um, I have a question for the city council, is there a specific building that you're trying to block? I mean, typically, when you do an emergency moratorium, there's something, oh my god, something's gonna happen, is that the case? Cause I don't know of any new construction plans in downtown, so I'd like that answered, please.
Uh, I can tell you right now that I'm not trying to block anything.
Okay, so then, why?
There is a construction project that's gonna be going on, on the corner of Paradise and.
Daniel.
Daniel. That is not in the area that I'm talking about. But would not be affected.
Why do we wanna send the message of a moratorium, if there's no specific plans? I feel like, if plans were submitted, you could pretty quickly get city council around to do a moratorium, so why do you need to send the message and do such a public thing as a moratorium, when there's nothing on the horizon? I mean, there's such good development in downtown, there's all these new businesses, there's- There's a lot of good momentum. People in Pullman are really positive about downtown. Why would you want to send the message that of such a strong anti-development? I mean, even if there's nothing going on, then why do anything? So unless there is something, then that needs to be brought to the table now.
Thank you, Allison. Chuck.
Quit shaking, I'll make it easy. I'm Chuck Geirizer. I think I'm the oldest person living in this town, in this room, that's been here the longest. I've seen a lot of changes. I was here before you. Anyway, the young lady behind me. Al has asked for this moratorium for one simple reason, to see what the experts say we should do with downtown. Where is this moratorium boundary? Olson? Grand? Triangle-shaped? Is that the area?
Pete? Pete, you want to give what the Central Business District is?
Don't take up my three minutes.
No, it's not. You're okay. You're okay.
I'll take about four minutes if you don't mind.
You and I'll have a discussion later.
There may be a welding project in that district.
Well, I don't know that the area's been...
Defined?
Defined. For sure. The C2 Central Business District zoning district goes from the Gladys Building to the Demishe...
We don't care about that.
I'm just telling you what the C2 zoning district encompasses. From the railroad tracks on Pellou Street over to Mackenzie Street. And the area for the downtown study takes in basically from the streets of Grand Avenue, Main, Paradise, Camiacken, Olson, I believe was included, and Pine Street. So those are the streets that are included in the study.
Correct. The central downtown...
The very core of the downtown.
Okay.
And I believe, based on council's statements, that that's the area that they are most interested in with respect to this proposed moratorium.
Okay.
I want to go back to Chuck here since he hasn't talked.
I'm all in favor of this moratorium for one simple reason. Growth is great. Evolve sucks. It's blocked everybody's view. But, that aside, if somebody wants to come to Pullman and build a new building, put in a new business, Planning Commission can do whatever they want to as far as giving permits. But it would be nice if they had an idea what Pullman wanted downtown for a building before they spent any money coming here and then finding out, "We don't want you." If anybody remembers the Washington Hotel, it was gorgeous. We'd like to keep Pullman Pullman. That's what makes it unique. We don't want to make it Pullman-Atle, which would be a subdivision of Seattle. So yeah, let's hold off. If it's only going to be two or three months? If anybody's planning on moving in here, they'll wait that long. Hell, the interest rates will be down another half percent by then.
Okay.
Thanks, Al.
Okay.
I wanted to bring up police department, but I'm out of time.
Thank you. Okay, now...
Just for point of clarification, there was a lot of confusion about some of the comments that were, some of the information that was out there after the last meeting, and we did some digging into it, is that we can define this area however suits the need of the public and our process going forward. The lines that Pete described, like he said, are most likely what Al is thinking of, but that's not absolutely written. There's nothing written in stone. And we could also, I'm reading off of the notes that we got from MRSC, we can allow certain types of things, we can limit it to specific uses, we can allow the moratorium period to be greater or less than the six months. Other communities, you know, define it for themselves. This is not a blocked thing that has landed in our laps that we're going to yea or nay on as it has been perceived. There is potentially a lot of flexibility in here. We have not specifically defined this as yet, so that's why we're here tonight, to hear what y'all have to say and figure out what the needs may or may not be.
Okay. Your turn, please. State your stand for the record, please.
I'm Angie Fierstein. I'm with my husband at the Fierstein, at the Waddell &amp; Reed Downtown. We own that building. And I just want to say thank you very much for the foresight to get a planning committee going and to get a professional plan. I visited my daughter in Colorado. Can't remember the name of the city, but it was like delightful, and it was like somebody really thought about this. And it was cohesiveness, and I kind of feel like I've seen something that maybe is coming our way when we get a plan and we want to figure out what it's to be. It seems really crazy to make any new building projects until we have that plan, so I'm in favor of a moratorium. I would, I'd like to see that extended till we receive the plans that we know that that's come back in. I mean, we started the process. You know, it just makes sense to me that you would see it through, like, you know, history, I've been here since 81, and I'm just delighted to see the interest that you are putting into the downtown. We've got amazing momentum connecting with the town and gown thing as well. There's just so much potential that I think this moratorium is a good idea, and I held my breath watching evolve go up, hoping, holding my breath that it would stop. So I think it's a good idea, and I appreciate your efforts. And I'm really looking forward to what the growth is to come, and there's going to be a lot more decisions ahead of us, and thank you for asking for public input.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Fukai. I'm the Regional Government Affairs Manager for Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories, and I thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this process. While SEL does not directly own property in the downtown core, SEL is impacted as we love and use our downtown. Our employees and customers come in from every corner of the city to get to SEL. We shop, we eat, we entertain, and we attend community events, and we want to ensure that our city reflects the outstanding community that we are. We have also developed multiple facilities in Pullman and appreciate the challenges and opportunities that other entrepreneurs face in the development process. Therefore, we are concerned about the moratorium. SEL believes that the best thing the city can do to encourage economic development is make it easier to start, grow, and attract businesses here, and we question how this mechanism and the message that it sends achieves that outcome. We support the community's numerous efforts and focused efforts to revitalize the downtown, and we also support the development of the master plan that is in the works to help bring together all the various initiatives that ultimately will contribute to a vibrant downtown. We ask that the city council not implement a moratorium and instead encourage and support the existing mechanisms. Our Planning Commission and City Planner in providing the strong leadership and vision that is necessary to ensure that Pullman remains a great place to live, work, and do business. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Go ahead. Next, please.
Chris Johnson, 445 Southwest Sundance Court, Pullman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and especially appreciate what Al has proposed. I think that one of the difficulties is in looking at something like this is you don't want to curb the opportunities for development. But at the same time, as I watch council meetings and I observe from afar, I think it's important for, and maybe what this opportunity is, is a moment for the city council to really look at what their role is in terms of governance and setting a vision. I think this is the exact type of thing that when you decided to hire a consultant and pay them money, that it's worthwhile to wait and see what those results are, because that's why you did it. If you didn't want, if you didn't want to wait for that, it may have been a different decision. And so I think every time the council makes a decision, I think it comes with accountability and responsibility for those decisions, and I think that's, this is a perfect example of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Looking around, I know there's some people here that just wonder if you're going to count. Okay. Because pretty soon I'm going to start doing like, okay, going once in the...
I'm Lisa Carloy, 1230 Northwest Haven Circle, longtime Pullman resident. And as a longtime Pullman resident, I feel that historically Pullman has lost a lot of opportunities to really do that cohesive building and make kind of a vision for who we are and what we want our downtown to be. And while I agree that a moratorium has the potential to stifle some opportunities that businesses may be thinking about right now, or developers may be thinking about right now, I think that not having a moratorium also stifles opportunities, because we lose opportunities when we don't have a vision in place. And, I mean, this has happened in, you know, small-scale and large-scale kinds of ways in Pullman, and I think that what we really need as a community going forward is a planned downtown that has a vision, that has some thought behind who we are and what we want to be and how we want to reflect that and what kind of a community we want to be. And I'm not a city planner. I don't know what negative messages a moratorium sends, but perhaps that is like a sledgehammer and I don't realize it. But I think that the Planning Commission is not set up to be able to do moratorium kinds of things, that the Planning Commission isn't free. My understanding is that they're not free to decide what kinds of buildings can go up and can go down. They're restricted by the rules and the laws and the ordinances that we have. And so I think we have had some things go through that may not, the Planning Commission may feel uncomfortable about, but they don't have the tools to allow it not to happen. So I'm in favor of a moratorium or any mechanism that allows us to put a pause and have some chance to create a vision and see what the consultant says and decide how we want to move forward.
Thank you. Next person, please. Going once, going twice. Anyone else who would like to make any comments? With that, we will close this public meeting. With that, council want to mention a couple things.
Kelly mentioned, you know, from SEL about things. You know, we are in the process of hiring a new economic development person. What is the name of the title exactly?
It's economic development.
Which is going to be...
We're down to two candidates now.
A major part of their job is going to be recruiting and businesses to town and helping them and helping existing businesses and that type of thing. So we, as a council, agreed to that and put that in our budget to get that going. We see this as a really big deal, if I'm, at least I do, that we have to make Pullman the place downtown that we want it to be. And I'll, you know, I don't know how Chuck said, "Seattle Pullman" or something, you know? I don't want that to be it either. We want Pullman to be our hometown place. I think that's what the, most of the people in this town want to have, and that's all we're trying to do. That's all I'm trying to do, is make it a good place for all of us. So we are working towards that with the consultants we have hired, with the person we're hiring to come in and be the economic development person, and all the town and gown, you know? Everything's moving along, and this is the time for us to do it, because if we don't get this all going now, it's going to be too late, in my opinion.
And we also received, Pete, you had one and I got one, two letters opposing a moratorium.
We also had some other ones that came in in favor of the moratorium.
Yeah, the ones I just saw were two here.
There were multiple ones that came in in the last couple of weeks in favor of the moratorium.
Okay. So now, the next thing is, we're not making a decision tonight, but the council, I know staff would appreciate some direction in terms of preparing things for the next meeting, whether, after you've taken comments here from the public, whether you want to proceed with the proposal. So Nathan?
Real quick, real quick question. Pete, I know some of the individuals weren't here for last time. Can you briefly explain the role that our consultant is playing in the overall vision of downtown? I know a lot of people have said, "This is a, this is a vision they're creating," but from what I understand, from my own work in planning, that is not exactly the real scope. So could you explain a little bit what the consultant is doing?
Well, the consultant was hired to create...
A vision.
I appreciate what you're saying, but they really were hired to create a vision for the downtown in accordance with the city council's desires to improve the function and the appearance of downtown. And so they'll be looking at a great deal of information and a lot of different elements downtown, traffic, public infrastructure, the appearance of downtown, parking. So the list is pretty long in terms of what they anticipate that they'll be looking at, but it's all part of creating goals and objectives that will add up to a vision for the downtown.
Does that include facades of buildings? Does that include the actual buildings coming in to downtown? That sort of, that's what I'm talking about.
Right. So what they have informed us and what we've communicated to them is that they will provide to us recommendations about uses and activities downtown in terms of private developments as well as the appearance of those businesses. And so they will be providing some recommendations about that, but it would be kind of preliminary information for the council to review. And then following that, then the work, if the council decides, yes, we want to pursue architectural design standards, for instance, then the council would provide that direction to staff, and we would go about creating those standards. So that would go through the Planning Commission and the city council as zoning code amendments. Again, we're kind of getting ahead of things here, but if that's the direction of council, then we would pursue that.
Okay.
So that would be something that would happen after January, so the preparation of the standards would occur over several months' time thereafter.
Hi, Lee.
There's been a lot of confusion, in my humble opinion, between the terms "design standards" and what I would refer to as "visual criteria," because design standards are something that's in the code. It's how many, how many steps per foot and how many riser run on steps and the angles of the roof and how big things are built so they stand up and don't fall down and hurt people. But like a visual criteria is what many people are referring to when they refer casually to "design standards." And so we can make that, try to make that clear as we, as we talk to people, that a visual criteria is a part of what can be constructed, can be put into the code as we move forward. So let's, you know, try to make that clear. The master plan scope was, is a document that is easy to read. It's not necessarily easy to find on the city website, and so I've been handing it out like crazy if someone would like a copy of that. I've been handing them out all day to people. I've got four or five copies here. If someone wants a copy, we can put them over on the side table over there for people to share. It's an easy-to-read document. It's very clear, and I think it answers a lot of questions. So pass that over there.
Okay.
I just have a very basic question, actually, for Pete, and that is, if I understand it correctly, we have businesses downtown that should we enact measures or whatever we call them to affect design standards, that those existing businesses are essentially grandfathered in under the existing code or definition of what we're looking at? And so it would only be new entities coming in. Should we change the code? Should we affect design standards, whatever it is? It would just affect new businesses, new construction coming in?
That's correct. Yes.
I just want to make sure that we had that clarification, because where there are situations where people might like the way a business looks or what their design standards or lack thereof are, that they might not necessarily fall within the confines of what we are talking about now.
Correct.
Okay. Now, you know, if we have a master plan or a look or a feel or a vision, which I think is what we're trying to do, right? Once we have that in place, as Chuck Geirizer said, the developers, they love to know that stuff. They want to know, what does Pullman want to have? What is their look and feel going to be? So I think it's a great thing that at least they'll have an idea then, whether we put in new code or we implement new things, at least they'll get a little bit of a feel from us as to what we're doing. And the whole reason for me to have this consultant firm hired was to help us with this. The exact same thing. The exact same thing. Where we go, whether we do design standards or other things after the fact, that comes later. But, you know, what do, what do we want downtown to look like? And it's in the document of what we ask to be done.
Brennan?
Yeah, I have quite a few notes here. So, excuse the pigeon scratch. So Allison had mentioned, if there's such good momentum, why a moratorium? And I don't like the word moratorium because I think there's more behind the sentiment than, than just simply stopping development. And I have heard from, from other friends who have said they don't like a moratorium. So I will readily admit that as well. I think it's because there is so much momentum and we have, we have a lot of art going up. We have, which I'm a fan of art, we have the wayfinding subcommittee of something with the downtown Pullman Association, you know, and I think there's a fear that, you know, one day we'll, you know, we'll drive into Pullman and all the signs are different, right? And we've gone through CIP and we know that one of the recommendations is Portlandite cement. Maybe that's not the best idea, right? And I, I think a consultant, if we've paid them money, will be able to say, based on the culture of your city, based on the brick buildings that are currently there and the history of, of this city, we believe that this is the best kind of bench, this is the best kind of light pole, best kind of garbage can. We've, we've talked CIP and O for the High Street Plaza. Is, is it a good idea to have a water feature or not a water feature? And that's, that's going to create a division among people. We're, we're not going to be satisfied the same way on everything. I'd love to see what the, what the consultant says on that. So, you know, for me, it's not about stopping just new buildings. I don't want to do that. I actually don't want to stop development. So maybe there's a way to flesh this out and maybe my concern is more stylistic, right? Maybe it's, maybe it's actually internal, maybe it's city, maybe it's city code, maybe it's city council adopted design standards or other things like that that, that I'm most concerned about. You know, there, there was, Kelly had made the point about supporting current mechanisms. I guess the, the concern is our, and I think some of this has been voiced, maybe not, maybe not exactly this way, but I mean, our comprehensive plan is from 1999. We've got design standard that's pretty old. So when the planning commission hears something, they are constrained sometimes. They're constrained to, to say yes to something because it's all in accordance with the comprehensive plan or they're told why, why it's legally on the up and up. And as it pertains to the design, or maybe it's aesthetics or whatever wording we want to use, and our attorney who's very good can help us get through that wording and flesh that out. Maybe that's where, I'm trying to figure out, how do we, how do we just pause or how do we, how do we hit the brakes on some of that? So, so we don't become too divisive, we don't become too polarized with, with things, whether it's, you know, art or sidewalk or, or the design of the streets, the traffic flow, things like that. So maybe it's not really even new buildings at all that I'm concerned about, but the look and feel of downtown and how do we bring people downtown to say, hey, I like it down here, right? I feel welcome down here. It feels warm. It's a nice place to go. It's fun to hang out. And maybe that's the sentiment behind my initial support of, of this moratorium, even though I don't, I don't like the word moratorium either.
So Laura is on the phone. And Laura, you heard a couple of questions that may have come your direction. Is there other methods?
Well, no.
Okay, thank you.
There aren't any other methods. I mean, if you want to limit development with temporary time within a defined order, then the way to do that is through a moratorium. You can certainly, as Councilmember Call pointed out, you can certainly put all of the criteria or special limitations or special permissions within that moratorium ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Does that help the council in the end, please?
I think that what Allison said was, was perfect. Why are we being preemptive? What is the emergency? I think that everything that Brandon spoke to, everything that Eileen spoke to, we are doing, we are being careful with our planning, what we are approving. We, as a council, approve every single piece of art that has gone up downtown since I've been on council. It comes through here and we approve it. So there is some control there. We didn't want wallpaper from the Washitakna Motel on our utility box. And we, and so I'm just saying, we have, we do have some mechanisms, mechanisms in place. We have expert staff to help us with that. And I think that we can continue with our desire to have a comprehensive look and feel by utilizing what the consultants come back with and going from there. I just don't feel like a moratorium is necessary, particularly because we've all said there are no plans for any buildings that would be affected by a moratorium. So I'm wondering, why would we be preemptive and exactly what is the emergency? Exactly what is it? Because that's what we have to define in order to ask for a moratorium to be written to, an ordinance to be dealt with.
Any other comments?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, when Al first brought this up, I've, I've been kind of going back and forth on this issue a lot. Because I, I think I agree in principle with the sentiment of, we're paying this money for this consulting company to come in and, and help provide us with this vision, gather community feedback, provide us with this vision. And if, if there's projects that come up in the meantime that, that get, going through that planning process, at some point, they're going to have, you know, all we have to do is follow the current rules. But some of the things that Pat said at the, at the meeting that we discussed this previously also made a lot of sense to me about, you know, we're talking about a very small area of the downtown core and there's not a whole lot of places where a new building could come in. And so we're, and there's not currently a building planned in that region or in that, in that area. So what is the rush for this if we're talking about, the plan's going to come in January? Pete went through kind of the planning process and how long it takes and we're not going to have a new building go up in, in that short a timeframe. But there's, there's something else that I've been kind of wrestling with as well. The downtown master plan project does not include currently that, those architectural design standards. That's something that would come potentially later if we wanted to. And for me, a moratorium, while we're considering the development of new design standards makes a little more sense to me than what we're talking about now with like this preliminary kind of approach to that. We're talking mostly about the public elements of the streetscape with this design plan. And so those architectural design standards could come later. And, and I think that, you know, what I've seen from other cities that are implementing those architectural design standards for their downtown districts, that's where they've implemented those moratoriums, those temporary moratoriums. And I think that makes more sense if that's the direction we think we're going to be going in. I think a moratorium makes a little more sense then. If we're, if we're not really sure if we're going to be going that route, I, I don't know what the emergency is right now for that. Because the, the plan isn't going to affect any buildings. Like, we're not going to have a finished product of design standards that's going to stop or change anything about how buildings go up once we get that plan. We'd have to take additional steps beyond that. So I'm still kind of
So I guess one question that I would have for staff then is how, how quickly would it be possible to examine design standards after we receive a plan back and talk about those?
Considering how long it's taken on the College Hill discussion of design standards? Quite a while.
Well, yeah. The College Hill Core Design Standards came with a pound of controversy. It certainly did. May not be, you never know when you go into a process like this. But yeah, I would think that within, it's hard to estimate now, four to six months, that we could put something together for the planning commission and city council's review.
To say, here's, you know, here's what we think would be in line with what the master plan has said.
Yeah. Carry forward. If there are recommendations that come out of the plan, then we could bring some proposed guidelines or standards to the planning commission and city council for review within that timeframe. You mentioned the comprehensive plan and of course, that's certainly a high priority for our update of the comprehensive plan. And I just want to put in my pitch here, anything that the, that's added to the planning department's workload will detract from completing that comprehensive plan. So I'm, I'm just putting it out there. I mean, there's only so many resources that we have. And obviously, comprehensive plan update is a high priority, but everything else that we have to do, that we're directed to do, will detract from the work that needs to be done for the comprehensive plan update, so.
You're already short staff right now. Nathan is next. And then I will.
Well, I think, first of all, you know, all of us sitting here are public servants. That's what we are. This is not about, you know, as, as Al had said before, you know, his, his, you know, focus is Pullman and serving Pullman. And that's what each of us have to look at. All right? We each feel like, we, all, each one of us is an actor that kind of wants to run the entire play, but we're not. So we have to take the input from all of you. I'm, I wish a few more downtown businesses had come to represent and, and give their view, because this is a, this is a fairly serious situation. You know, as, as I was taking some notes on who agrees, who doesn't agree, first of all, it's important and I thank all of you for coming and giving your testimony. The challenge here, and this is what I've thought about, I agreed as, as council member records said, I agreed with the idea of waiting because there are some standards. However, I will say, as I said in the prepared speech last time, but I was a little soft on the delivery, this sends a bad message. You know, I mean, it doesn't matter. I understand everyone, my friends out there who came up and testified against it or for it, I understand. And there's some people upset with Evolve, there's some people that are okay with Evolve. For me, eating up outside of the city, putting more and more developments outside of the city, ends up, as I said, putting stress on our infrastructure, increases the cost to our city. So densifying and using mixed use in the downtown area is ultimately a good practice, as long as it's done in the right way, which, and I'm not talking about Evolve, but many of the other buildings down there have done. And the business owners have been very good about being involved in the process of taking care of their buildings and really working towards a vision. They've created a group, they're working on a vision. This will have far reaching implications if we go through with a moratorium. It's not just about the central business district. We're thinking microcosm, you know, a small triangle. This, when other people, other cities, developers hear this as it goes out in the paper, the radio, they hear moratorium, whether it's one month, four months, five years, developers are going to say, well, you know what? Pullman seems to be closed for business. And as Allison brought up, we are right now rolling along. We're on a good, we're on a good trajectory. If we stop this, that, this is going to have implications far into the future. So I think it's important for all of us to recall that and to think about that, because this is similar to what happened early on in Pullman's development and we lost a lot of momentum and we have been gaining a lot of that back. So, I mean, I will listen to the public, I will vote with what the public says, but those, those are my major concerns. The narrative is wrong.
Eileen?
Pete brought up a, a good example about the design standards for College Hill, and I'll get, we'll loop back to that in a second. If within that four to six month time period, you think you can get together some visual criteria type design standards for the downtown to work in concert with the master plan?
Yes.
To be considered in concert with the master plan?
Yes.
Something for us to look at, a draft, if nothing else. And like, the, the, one of the challenges with the College Hill plan was, and again, it never really came out of the draft stage, there was a lot of mistakes and I think we learned a lot through that process. And I'm confident that we won't make those same mistakes again. And in looking to, to satisfy what is obviously an expressed need in the community, the people here tonight and people I've talked to over the last week or so, is, I, I would be interested to, to maybe explore that, to look at that four to six month period of getting some visual criteria design type standards to go in conjunction with the master plan. I am uncomfortable with the M-word in all regards in this community and, but I do think it's, but I do think we need something and we need it now to go along with the master plan. And I know that's not going to make some of my fellow council members very happy, but we need a way to move this forward in a positive way to get to where we need to get without, you know, throwing out the anchor, all the other metaphors that have been used here this evening. So if we have something that we know that we can share with the public and that the public can take away from this meeting tonight, that there will be something moving forward. And I know it kind of puts the, the comprehensive plan on the, on the side burner and that's, that's not necessarily healthy either, but this is what, this is where the bleeding is occurring right now. And we need to stop the bleeding right now, is get this, get a Band-Aid on, not a Band-Aid, that's a bad word, but to get some forward movement on this. Because I got a meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock or this is what we're going to be talking about. And I need something that comes out of this group here to take to that meeting and say, okay, here's where we're going forward, that, that will get us there. Well, not might get us there, that will get us there.
Okay, once again, in summary, the design, the report coming back from the consultant will come out sometime in January, okay? Eileen was asking for possible examples of design standards that could possibly work for downtown. We've heard council members who are for and against moratorium, we actually heard that from the public. And all we're asking tonight, not a vote, but basically, should the staff prepare a document? And Laura, please join in and help me out on this if you'd like. Should the staff prepare a document that would indicate a moratorium for a limited period or a short period, or should the staff not prepare that? So that's, and I'm hearing people saying
I would say not prepare.
I say prepare it. Let us vote on it.
Okay, okay, and we'll just, the question will be, should we prepare a document about a moratorium? And it could be defined, well, you've already defined a small core area. Have you defined a, a time period? You said six months earlier?
Well, six was the, what we were told was the normal number, but Eileen's done some research on that, so.
We can, we can do it, yeah.
At the end, should it
Two months, four months, six months?
Should it be at the end of January, since we're hearing a report coming out in January? Well, we need to make sure that it's after, after that report. That, by
And again, when the report comes back to you at the next council meeting, then you can have a vote on it too. You can decide, you'll take additional input. Okay, so if you would like to make a motion to prepare a document, go right ahead.
I do have one other comment to make, though. There's some discussion here and some comments being made that there are no projects in the works right now. I understand that. If there was, I wouldn't be doing this anyway. We couldn't do this. The idea here is to hold them for just a slight period of time until we, as a council, have been able to look at our master plan that's being figured out right now.
So, you're, you're proposing the motion
Yes.
That staff should prepare a document about a moratorium. That staff should prepare a document about a moratorium in the small area that is covered by our consultant.
Right, correct. Okay. Does that get enough, Laura?
For a period not exceeding six months.
Correct, yes.
And, and, yeah, after six months, if the study isn't back yet, if there's a delay for somebody, then the council can always extend...
Right.
A moratorium, like, if someone has to hold another public...
And you had to do that with the marijuana shops, too, so, okay. So, he's made a motion to do that, to prepare a document. Do I hear a second to that?
Can I ask one question? Would this be on all new development, including new buildings, everything?
It was for new construction.
New construction only in that core area for not to exceed six months, to prepare the document, not necessarily vote on that, because tonight we're just saying, prepare the document. Okay, do I hear a second to that?
Mayor, could I ask for some clarification on...
Certainly.
...by only new construction? So Al, could you explain what you mean by that?
Have they submitted their lands yet?
Right, remodel is not part of it.
Okay, so you're talking about development of an empty lot?
No, not necessarily. If they tear something down and want to build a new structure, that would be new construction.
Okay.
So, are you okay with that, Laura?
Yeah, I just want to be able to define it clearly, if it's the way the council goes.
I have yet to hear a second. Yes, Pete?
So there is a proposal to establish four apartments in the upstairs of a building on Camiacken Street between Main and Paradise.
An existing building?
An existing building, so it would be interior improvements only, so with the moratorium...
Not part of my request.
No.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
And the project that's known as Paradise Lofts is not in the area either, as you confirmed at the meeting when I asked.
It's outside...
Outside of my...
It's outside the boundaries that we discussed last time, yes.
I want to make that clear.
And I have yet to hear...
Because there have been multiple...
You have problems with that?
The central business district master plan boundaries included Paradise Street, and so that development is on Paradise and Daniels, so for staff, it's kind of unclear whether that's in or out.
It's on Daniel Street, it's just called Paradise Loft.
What we discussed last time was because it was south of Paradise Street, that it was not included.
I agree.
That's a distinction we probably should...
It's not included.
Okay, so...
But it includes mimosa in case anybody wants to tear that down.
Yes, okay, Eileen?
But we can make it, I realize there's been some confusion, because I've looked at several maps, and I'm scratching my head over that. We can make it sparkling clear that it does not include that proposal. Is that correct, Laura?
Yes, and you could also make it clear that it's only lots with a street, assigned street address, that the address is located within the study area.
Whatever provides the most clarity.
Okay. So, again, I have not heard a second to the motion. And it will die on the lack of a second, so we can just move on. We've got other things to cover tonight, so with that, I'm going, and I don't hear a second, so the motion does not go any further. With that, we now move on tonight to item number two, resolution authorizing the execution of professional services agreement between the City of Pullman, Barney &amp; Worth. With that, Kevin Gartis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. In May of last year, I think, an error, I said in October in the staff report, Council authorized a professional services agreement with Barney &amp; Worth aimed for preparation of a strategic plan. The plan was completed last year, and I've attached a copy of the PowerPoint slides the consultant prepared that are related to public works and planning. One recommendation in the plan has already been implemented, and that's the restoration of the city engineer position, which was filled with the promotion of Cara Haley. A strong second recommendation is to create a one-stop shop for development customers. We like the title of Community Development Department as opposed to Development Services, that was the other choice, which would combine the Planning Department, Protective Inspections, Division, Public Works. All of the peer cities evaluated by the consultant use this best practice. Another recommendation is to evaluate opportunities for additional staff specialization and M&amp;O. In order to assist city staff with development of these two initiatives, staff work with Barney &amp; Worth to come up with a scope of work and budget to provide planning support services for these efforts. A consultant agreement has been prepared. The work is scheduled to be completed by February 2020 with the intent to incorporate recommendations into a 2021-2022 budget cycle. Deliverables include a Community Development Department Plan and an M&amp;O strategic plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Kevin on this agreement? And if not, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Moved a second. And I'll read it, Resolution R 5819, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the City of Pullman and Barney &amp; Worth Incorporated for development of a Community Development Department Plan and M&amp;O Strategic Plan. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three is a resolution to accept the bid Quality Contractors LLC for City Hall and Parks and Recreation, and you have a very detailed memo in there from Kevin Gartis and Mike Urban. We'll start with Kevin, because as you have heard by now, bids came in far higher than we expected, and that is what we're seeing nationwide right now. Sure, that, Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. The Scopa Contract 19-09, City Hall and Parks and Recreation Center relocation includes site work and improvements to two existing buildings at the former Encounter Ministries property at 190 Southeast Cressby Drive. Bids for the project were open on July 23, 2019, with three bids received. The low bidder was Quality Contractors LLC at $7,116,956. This was for the base bid only. The architect's estimate, again, base bid only, is $5,987,997. The low bid was 19% higher than the estimate. Staff reviewed the possible reason for bids coming in significantly over the estimate with our project architect, Ned Warnock of Design West Architects. Design West has provided two memos, which are included in your council packet, that provide some information on reasons for the project's cost increases. These can be summarized in two general categories, construction cost escalation and project scope additions. Under construction cost escalation are items such as delay in bidding related to a second bond election and district court conversation, as well as recent prevailing wage rate increases. Under scope additions are site work improvements, initial deployment of electric vehicle charging stations, and future proofing the building, which is a term I got from our finance director. And these include things like providing the shaft and foundation work for a second elevator in the base bid, because if we were to do that after the building was occupied, there would be a whole lot of pain and suffering involved with that, and much higher costs. Staff spent time discussing the option of rejecting the bids, re-scoping, and rebidding. However, we struggled with how to carve out large-scale savings without significant reductions in scope and programming. We were also concerned that construction prices will continue to escalate in the interim period before the project could be rebid. Therefore, staff concentrated on determining which alternates to recommend and developing a plan to cover the cost overruns. Both of these efforts are summarized in the memo in your packets. Staff is recommending moving forward with the word of the base bid and build alternates 1A, 4, 6, 7, 10, 12, and 13 to Quality Contractors LLC. The bid alternates include a new composition shingle roof on Building A, new senior center entry awning, upper-level mezzanine wall enclosure and material finishes, installation of an elevator car in Building A, walking path track corner modifications, kitchen equipment, and an emergency generator. One question that I've been asked is, with using public works funds to cover a portion of the overrun, does that delay or defer any public works initiatives or project studies or capital projects? And the answer is no. In the short term, you know, we're not proposing to touch anything that's included in our 2019 and 2020 budgets. This money's coming out of reserves, the public works funds are relatively healthy that we're proposing to take reserves from, so I know I probably missed a few things. Staff has spent a lot of time working on this, trying to figure this puzzle out, and they turn it over to our finance and administrative director, Mike Urban, to help me out with anything I missed.
I think you'll like to hear you didn't miss much. So let me just fill in a couple of the blanks on this, and working with staff to come up with what we're giving you to discuss tonight and be able to answer any questions as to what, why, and how. The bill of alternatives that we are not recommending, we looked at it from a standpoint of, could we do this later? Could we postpone it? Or is it absolutely necessary to the functionality of this building, or is this just something nice to have for Pullman? So really, what I want to touch on specifically is the, right at the end of the memo here, where we're talking about the remaining deficit and making up those dollars. It was important for me to present you a quasi-balanced budget, I guess, on this particular issue, where we're not, number one, cutting into programs. I can certainly go back and add some things and bring some options for that, and number two is to preserve the fund balance, because we're using a lot of that fund balance to balance the 2020 budget. So the first two places I went and looked are, what revenues have we realized 100% of the budget already in 2019, and that was in the natural gas tax and the fines and forfeitures. So when I went and projected that out over the next five months, that's how I came up with the $109,000 and the $17,000. This is dollars that we've already budgeted for, realized, and now I'm expecting at least this much to come in on those. And in fact, on the natural gas of that $109,000, $60,000 has actually come in since the memo. Then I went and looked at, where do we have funds being held outside of the general fund reserves that absolutely would be commensurate with a building project? And that would be the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, because this is a large capital item. Now, I have that, the CIP committee has met, and council members McCall and Chapman are a part of that committee. The CIP plan will be coming back to council in the next six weeks.
Don't have a date yet, but yes.
It's been through Planning Commission, there was no substantive changes, and there is set-aside dollars in there for certain parts of the project to help fund that. The last piece that we're touching on is I worked with Kevin Gartis on the government building reserves, and how much of that, we could draw that down to, we'll still be able to perform the basic operations of the city, again, nothing catastrophic, but where we felt comfortable drawing that down to. So that $200,000 is coming out of reserves, there's still dollars in there to do basic stuff, but if, like, the H-back on this building goes out, I will have to get creative at another way to fix that. So, that is where we are, and I'd be happy, Kevin, if you have any questions, concerns, or...
So as we pointed out, staff has been working very hard to try and make this project work, considering the bids where they came in, and they found places where we can cut, and some, and they found revenue to cover some of this. So with that, we'll just go for questions. Now, we'll start with...
Help me out a little bit, Mike, here. On the bond, the $10.5 million bond, we had the purchase of the property, basically $3.5 million. What did we have, Kevin, what did we have the estimate at for construction when we did the bond?
Was it seven?
Ned, do you remember the...
Twenty-five, he said, so maybe it's 5.5.
So did that number include the bond commitment fee, the fixtures and equipment? Am I looking at this right? Fixtures and equipment, is that in the new City Hall?
Yes, it is. It's for...
And the consultant fee?
Correct. So I believe so. I believe the answer is yes.
So if I add these up, I mean, we didn't ask for enough in the bond, anyway.
Looking at, looking at where, the site work, I believe, was not originally estimated in the bond, is that a correct statement?
That's correct, because we didn't know what the site work requirements would be at the time, and we figured we had alternate mechanisms to cover that.
And the site work is now $450,000. So you do that, and you look at the increase in prevailing wage, I mean, just plumbing this year, I believe, went up from $61 an hour to eighty, sixty, seventy, eighty-one, or sixty-seven, eighty, seventy, it went up about $20 an hour for just plumbing work. And there's a fair amount of plumbing going on in this deal, not to mention electrical and everything else. So, yeah, as the time has rolled along, the costs have escalated quite a bit, and I think it's safe to say that this is a, you know, there's a buyer's market and a seller's market, and we're on the wrong side of that a little bit, maybe, right now. So when we did the estimate for what construction, we knew what it was going to cost to buy the place.
Right, that was a fixed number, we had that.
Pretty much.
And the rest of it, I'm just, I'm amazed that we're off. I really am. I'm shocked.
I'm not sure about the bond commitment fee, but I think the rest of it was pretty close. I just, as Mike has mentioned, you know, there's things that have happened in intervening time, where construction costs have gone up more than expected based on the additional time, and then the prevailing wage increases certainly haven't helped either, and those were recently in the last year.
The bond was passed when?
2017.
I think it was, it was, 2017 was the first try.
Was it officially passed?
Right.
Eighteen, early, early, yes. That'd be right.
And that had an impact, the, you know, the bond, the challenge to the bond at first, that had an impact as well.
And we even saw from the airport standpoint, which is different construction that we're dealing with, they have, that was a 30-month window, and that was really off from engineering estimates, and they actually factored tariffs in, because they don't know where the tariff's going to be. And I think tariffs came into this one here, too, a little bit, too.
Yeah, experiencing the airport bond and how it came in over budget, I went to work right away, kind of fretting what may happen when we did the bid opening, and so having that opportunity gave you a head start on the work.
So are there further questions?
I have a comment. I just, I really liked how you put together this memo, it's very straightforward, it's easy to follow with the bid alternates, and I really appreciate the effort to find a way to put that second elevator in now, because that's a project you don't want to do once we're in there. And that project and the corners on the locking path is just going to make it so much more accessible for people to use.
Yeah, I'll follow up on, with Dan on that, and I really appreciate the, that this really reflects the substance of the CIP discussion. So I really appreciate that you took all that into consideration, and these were the key core elements. You know, we went around and around about the generator, but we need that generator for, to keep our city running and to have a shelter function if we need that shelter function.
Especially IT.
And for the IT, and for the 120 meals a week that we provide to our seniors, that would be essential in a major challenge caused by weather commitment or, you know, weather emergency or something. So I'm really pleased with, you know, this was very thoughtful, this was very heartfelt, with really the people in mind, the users in mind.
Okay, Nathan?
I do want to recognize also, we did have comments saying, well, should there be, I want to recognize John, he had emailed saying, open it back up for public opinion, but I know the public did speak, they need this, they want this, and if we wait...
And the city found within its resources...
Yeah, and the city is, it's on the city, and if we wait, that cost is just going to continue to rise, right?
That's what we're seeing today.
Yeah, yeah, so, but it is appreciated that people are emailing, giving their opinions regarding it, so.
Brandon, do you have a comment?
No, I just have a question. So if we were to dip into reserves, I mean, do we, I know that 13% is a figure that I've heard.
Yeah.
But I think, Mike, you had... But I think, Mike, you had sent something of, are we far below that at least anticipated for next year?
Yeah.
And does that come at the cost of other services? Should we need that?
I don't believe it comes at the cost of other services right now. I spent a lot of time being very careful to be able to bring something that wouldn't affect programming. That's certainly another option, too, that we could look at programming if there's certain things to look at. But my, the email that I sent out on the reserves says, you know, right now, the projected fund reserve at the end of 2019 is expected to be just north of 4 million. And right now, we're just north of 5 million. But we're using a lot of those reserves to balance the 2020 budget. So the projected reserve budget is going to be at about 5.5% next year at 1.3 million. So having that $1 million of reserves in 19 to be able to help fill that hole a little bit brings that 5.5% up to a healthier place. Now, there's nothing stopping us from taking that down because we don't have a reserves policy in this city. That was one of the things I discovered when I was taking this job. And I know there's some unofficial policies.
Counsel, we recommend a 13%.
I would prefer to have a written policy, but... So if we were to feel uncomfortable dipping into that reserves, if we wanted to be able to use that for something next year, if we were to look at other areas that we could, I mean, I think it's 160,000 for Portico. I mean, if we wanted to do budget engineering, I mean, what kind of options do we have to meet whatever, whatever the amount is that we need and not, and still be able to get things like the elevator?
Well, the elevator's in, according to this recommendation.
So to clarify, you're discussing the items that were left off the recommendation and being, and supplementing those back in?
That was left off.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm with you. Go back to here. Yeah, you could absolutely go in there and fund everything and there's reserves to handle that and meet the 2019 criteria. 2020, I send everybody the sales tax and how we're doing on that. We're trending in my estimation right now, and I reserve the right to change my mind as more numbers come in. 99 to 100%, under 1% of budget on that. Sales tax continues at the same rate. So, yeah, we can kick the can down the road a little bit and do some of those things. I think my biggest concern, as I just sit here and discuss this with you, is that we're tapping into the building reserves to fund this little part. And if we take a little bit more out of the reserves over here in general fund, if something does happen in this building, then we're probably going to have to touch the general fund reserves as well to fix whatever that is. That's the, that's the boogeyman in the, you know, under the bed type of a scenario.
If, no, I saw, I saw quite a few comments from residents who were not happy about the overruns or they felt, whatever the methodology was that we used to come up with that bond amount, they felt like they were going to get the city hall at that amount and everything was going to be fine. I don't want to cut services at all. Like, I don't, Senior Center needs their, their stuff. I want Parks and Rec to have, so if we were just looking at the city hall portion of it, I mean, are there things that we could put in CIP for the next year such as a finished council chamber? I mean, could we, could we come here for a year or two or something? I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather be in a cardboard box than have residents feel upset like we're, we're spending their taxpayer dollars unwisely.
We're, again, staying within the budget that we have, is what we're doing. And we're using other, other means to cover this particular overrun.
Yeah, it's not...
We want to make sure that's clear. We're not, and we're, we're trying to accomplish what we can to make it a very effective city council chamber. And the same thing with Parks and Rec, we're doing that. Now, there's some other window dressing later that we've taken out of this just to try and cover this. But the staff has been going through this pretty carefully. And at least they've come up with ways of funding it, to do it, not going back to taxpayers, not asking for more taxpayer money, covering it within the, within our, within our means.
I would not recommend, I would recommend finishing the council chambers as part of this construction, just for the economies of scale. Sure. As I look through the five or so items that we aren't bringing to you, and again, I may editorialize a little bit here and I apologize for that, but Bid Alternate 3 was the new vest rule, the, when you walk in, the architectural framework.
The tower that we took out.
And that came in significantly higher than the engineers' estimates, I think more than any other item. So when we talk about the practicality of putting forth the structure that serves the purpose of the entire citizenry of Pullman, whether you work in it, use it, or otherwise, that just seemed like something that...
Okay, so that's what I was, that's the Portico that I was...
Right, okay. And then there's some other things that'd be nice to do while, you know, it's gutted, but, you know, it's, we've come to a point where here's the dollars. We feel like we've hit that, but we also haven't started to dig in on the potential cost overruns as...
And the engineers will be working closely with contractors on this to try and keep that to a minimum.
We would look at value engineering, so if, by working with the contractor, they propose a savings by doing it slightly different than we've gotten the plans and specs, so we can save some money, we'll be very amenable to those types of proposals to try to carve out enough money to cover any potential change orders that would occur.
So any other further comments, or do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, R 5919.
Okay, do I hear a sign? Resolution, R 5919, accepting the bid of Quality Contractors LLC for the City Hall and Parks and Recreation Center relocations and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? With that, we go to new business tonight. I have one item that's before you, and Brandon will have another item coming up. We have a memo in front of you about Whitman County's report. Adam himself and Art Swanet sat down at the table yesterday. We worked out a basic agreement here, and we're presenting it to you tonight. Depending on how your counsel, how the counsel agrees to this, then I will send Art a note and his Whitman County Commissioners will look at it tomorrow. But basically, the memo that you have before you says the county has offered to continue with status quo, which means that they'll waive the cost of filing fees in lieu of the space that they will receive within Pullman City Hall building. The alternative offer was made that would require the city to pay $50 per filing and the county then would pay $3,000 per month in rent to the city. The simplest process would be to keep the status quo for the upcoming year. While it's a concern that eventually the court will be the only tenant in the building that costs nearly $50,000 per year to operate due to the delays of the future city hall project, it's unlikely that the current building will be unoccupied until nearly mid-year 2020. City council could also choose to select the $50 filing fee and the $3,000 per month rent. Given the number of cases that the court provided the city, this option could mean that the city pays the county more than we receive in rent by paying the filing fees. Also, in case there will be staff time required to process and track those payments, although it will likely be minimal added the duties to the current workload. And there is also ways to try and decrease the cases that are being filed with court by handling more of the parking ticket process in-house and thus potentially decreasing the amount of cases that the city has to file in court. Now, under Whitman County District Court, Whitman County has provided documentation that included the, their perceived cost for operating the court, which included prosecution, jail, and aspects of operating the court itself. To participate in the court, the city is required to pay any additional costs that the county bears to process the city of Pullman cases. The county started with 488,000 and then lowered their number to 460,000 through ongoing negotiations. City officials met again with county officials yesterday, and we discussed 460,000. It was also brought up. It still seems that there were costs included in the breakdown that would remain cost to the county regardless of the city's participation. County agreed to remove further items from the list of costs and stated they would agree to move forward at a cost of $450,000 or a little more than $100,000 over the current price, $347,000, which we've been paying since 2012, and we have not had an increase since that time. So the recommendation at this point, the staff is recommending the city agrees to one of those options, to keep the court in Pullman, move forward, one-year agreement. Again, it's a one-year agreement and the amount of $450,000, which Gary Jenkins went over a while back and came up that that was pretty well close to what you were estimating in terms of that, that number. So with that, we would like to have direction from the council. But again, I just want to show you, we have made some progress. So Nathan?
Well, it looks like the best economics would be in keeping the status quo.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the simplest thing to do. That's what we're already doing.
And then agree to the 400. Okay. Well, should we make a motion on that? Or just basically, I have our counsel's agreement on that. How would you like that?
Well, it will be an interlocal agreement. So we will bring that in a local agreement back to you with these terms.
Okay. So thank you very much for your input. We appreciate that. Now, Brandon, you had a item you want to bring up in this.
Yeah, so I had asked Chief Jenkins about speed and infractions for a specific reason, and that is, you know, there are, there are these three E's in traffic management that they, they talked about in speed. There's education, there's engineering, there's, there's enforcement. And I know that some of our, our friends and neighbors from Harvest Drive came earlier and they had spoken about the concerns on their road. The concerns are real, and I've been there and I've sat there. And one of the residents, she thought that the idea that I had a radar gun for baseball purposes was pretty neat, so she went and got one herself. And so, you know, she's, she's clocking cars and they, they all have a lot of small, small children on this road. I don't think that this road is unique necessarily entirely across the board. I mean, I think there are a lot of neighborhoods that, that might share their, their concern. But, but there is a perfect storm in, in the location of this street. It is a cut through for a lot of people to go to some of the commercial entities that we have. There is topography at play, and it was astounding at some of the speeds. Now, now the mayor was, was great in having a sign put up saying it was a residential area. That's part of the education.
I still haven't seen the flags come up there, even though I saw the...
They're there now.
Are they there now?
They're there now.
Good, good.
And it hasn't done much. And so they, they continue to worry. And now I realize, and as somebody had messaged me, you know, you should have thought about this right before you bought a house. They're, well, I mean, I get it, and I think that's a pretty crass way to look at it. I live on a street, too, that didn't seem too bad. And then it was after we moved in that we realized the speed was a little higher. Now, now the state law, there is RCW that was, was passed in 2013 allowing, without an engineer's report, but with a buyer's remorse, that would allow cities to, say, in neighborhoods that are non-artorial, we can go to 20 miles an hour. We can try it out. And if after a year or up to a year, sorry, up to a year, it doesn't work out so well, then, then certainly you can reverse that and move it back, right? No harm, no foul. You don't have to have an engineer's report to move it back. Now, I realize that if, if it's tough to go 25, it might be tough, even tougher to go 20. But the data is really compelling to, to show that, that even if you were to have worst-case scenario when a child or an adult hit by a car at 20 miles an hour or a little bit more than that, it's, it's going to be significantly less than whatever the overage is over 25. And right now, at least, I don't feel confident that the people are getting stopped and they're getting ticketed and they're, they're feeling like there's a necessary reason to change behavior. So, you know, before worst-case scenario happens, I'd like to consider to try this out as a, as a pilot. I mean, this doesn't have to be every single street, neighborhood street, non-artorial in the city of Pullman, but this would be, for, for me, it would be a good idea to, to possibly look at this. There's a reason the Neighborhood Streets Bill came in, in play, and, you know, it's been fairly successful in a, in a lot of areas. And this is a different discussion than when we talk about 20 miles an hour downtown here as a potential. This is about the safety of, of these neighbors and, you know, I know the senior, the Board of the Senior Center said they really, they really endorse this as well. And they wrote us a letter about that. So they also have concerns. When we talk about walkability in Pullman and we talk about quality of life, I mean, those two are intermingled. And because this is a route to school in addition, I think it's really important to, to at least start moving that, that direction.
I have a question.
Anne?
Thank you. May I ask a question about the school zone? And this might be more for Kevin. I'm thinking about Hall Drive over by the Jefferson School. And at some point, a lit school zone with a yellow light sign was erected on Hall Drive for children crossing to go to the plum path at Jefferson. So, and I'm not saying to not do the 20 miles an hour, but my first thought, when we first had this conversation, was why is Harvest not more visibly marked as an, as a school zone? I, I, maybe there are some markings, but, you know, painted crosswalks, maybe a sign like what we have on Hall Drive, which is farther away from Jefferson, I think, than Harvest is from Franklin.
Franklin, I like it.
We looked at all the schools. Councilmember Chapman was a big driver of that and his wife. So we've put up, we've, it was a policy before Councilmember Chapman brought it up, that we didn't have a lot of those school signs up, but we checked RCW, we went back and checked WAC, and it was a requirement. So we did put them up all over the city where they were required within probably the last about two years ago, I would say. I guess I would just offer a few things about Harvest. Harvest is in our functional classification system, which defines what our city arterials are. And so they're classified at the low end as a minor collector, and that's what Harvest is, all the way up to a major arterial, and those would be the state highways. So when we talk about having reduced speeds of 20 mile-per-hour zones on arterials, even minor collectors, you know, that, that's running a little bit counter to efficiently moving people through. I know in vehicles, and I know that there's been a lot of conversations about multimodal transportation and making pedestrian and bicyclists feel safer in Pullman. And so there was maybe some emails exchanged about this earlier in the summer. And we're, we have spraying and Harvest on our arterial, our resurfacing for next year in our CIP. And so that's why we did the utility project there this year. And we've talked about potentially at Pheasant Run and Harvest, which is near this area, looking at maybe as part of that resurfacing project, necking it down there to provide traffic calming through that area, provide a shorter pedestrian crossing at Pheasant Run across the street. So that would be a solution that I would propose, that, you know, something to think about.
There's other ways where they actually put the curbs out a little bit more, and you have like, you have some foliage in there. I've seen that in other communities, and I saw, especially when I was in Europe, how they calm the thing down from a wider street to a narrower, because that actually slows you down.
We'd make it fairly narrow because you had, with the studies show, it's got to make drivers put the brakes on. And that helps with a shorter pedestrian crossing there. So I know that a lot of school kids probably would like to cross there or cross there without much crosswalk.
There is, there is actually a city path, it's city-maintained, that cuts through behind, from Franklin, behind Bishop, Bishop Place, right through.
Right.
Right, yeah. And it's kind of, it is kind of a blind corner, too. I just, I just don't, I just don't want to keep prioritizing vehicle traffic over what, what I perceive to be, you know, children's safety, especially because, as Nathan said, I mean, we work for the residents, and the residents, at least in this area, are pretty darn upset about, about what's going on right now. And all, in all honesty, a lot of the traffic that goes through there, they're not even live, they don't live there, right? So, you know, I know within the, within the law, I mean, the law has said, you know, whatever this functional classification is, that, you know, the minor collectors are certainly eligible for this. And I, I think that the fact that they give us a, you know, an out, if you will, to say, hey, look, we tried it for up to a year and it didn't work, it gives us that opportunity to... it didn't work, it gives us that opportunity to at least see.
Nathan?
Is there, I'm trying to recall all the, because I know you've brought this up before, is there an electronic sign giving feedback about this speed there?
We've had one up there.
We tried it on Center, it just isn't really much.
Yeah, yeah, was there, I mean, was there a noticeable difference? I'm, I'm trying to recall all the conversations.
I don't think we record data on that, so...
Okay.
You wouldn't record speed percentiles?
No, we didn't. It would just be whatever feedback we have from residents.
We can put traffic counters out to get actual speed data.
So I think there were some traffic counters that were, they were out there shortly after the speed trailer was out, even if the speed trailer didn't collect any data. So you might, I'll follow, yeah, you might be into that.
The permanent signs that we have on Center Street that have...
They're about five grand apiece.
Yes, and they actually do count. They actually do, actually measure.
Oh, they count, too?
They actually, no, they actually measure speed. Yeah, and it collects data, so we have...
I mean, that is, that's a drop in the bucket for getting that kind of real data. I mean, you know, I just, I just know we had discussions about school zone around Franklin, and there was no sooner than we did that we, we did have a child hit, and I certainly don't want to have, have it happen here where the speed's even, even greater, so...
So, is it possible, then, Kevin, that you can maybe come back in the next council meeting with some, maybe some ideas and recommendations that could be done at least before your resurfacing project, and what you're, you're actually trying to narrow the street down?
Yeah, I can come back with further discussion. I would say the one point I would, would bring up, and I've mentioned this before, changing the speed limit on a street, if, if the traffic just naturally drives it at 25 miles per hour, putting the speed limit at 20 without enforcement, most, you know, most cars are still going to drive it at 25, that's kind of what the data shows. So, for me, the idea of physically making them slow down, whether it's a traffic circle or a neck-down, or some chicane, or some other type of traffic calming, is, is more foolproof absent enforcement. So, some of these tools, you have to have, be writing tickets, and you have to be actively enforcing to get drivers to really pay attention. And so, we've tended to gravitate towards the engineering solutions and the three E's of making people have to slow down. The radar speed signs on Center Street did work, but I don't know, it's your gauge of how successful they were. One of them slowed it down a mile, maybe a mile and a half per hour, one of them slowed people down maybe a mile per hour in the other direction, but that's absent enforcement. You know, if there was enforcement going on with those radar speed signs, perhaps it would have gone down a little bit further.
Like WSU with the 20 miles, and then the police right there.
Well, then WSU even changed their, they went down to 20 on Fairway, and then they went back up again.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Eileen, you have a comment?
Yeah, I grew up in a neighborhood where the streets were nice and quiet, and we rode our bikes and all, et cetera, but since that time, they have become cut-throughs. And that's just, that's just not a lot of fun for anybody. I mean, my sisters lived on the same street, my niece lives on that street, and it's a cut-through street now, and it's absolutely completely changed the character of that neighborhood, but not for the good, and it is very near an elementary school, although not in a school zone. I, you know, what can it hurt to try to, to go to 20 miles an hour? We don't have to have an engineering study. If you can come up with some of those engineering-type solutions. What I see the problems with the neck-down or a chicade is, I want to hear from Chief Mike on that. You know, how does that impact, you know, getting emergency service vehicles through there? How does that impact snow removal? I would much rather see a 20 mile an hour sign, and if it doesn't work, we yank the thing out and we go to something else, rather than putting in a, a permanent fixture that we have, we'll have to maneuver around at, you know, in all weathers. So, you know, let's try to, maybe try the easy thing first, and with enforcement, we would need enforcement, and I don't know where Chief Gary is on that, but, yeah, just try something simple and educate the public.
Next is Dan.
I agree with Kevin's comments about kind of the, the speed limit sign, if, if that's what the road feels like, if that's what people are driving at those higher speed limits, the 20 mile an hour speed limit sign may catch some of them, because, I mean, it's just a change from the normal 25 that you see everywhere else. But this road in particular, I think, why people are tending to drive faster is, it's a very wide road, and there's not a lot of parking that happens in front of those houses along that, along that street.
There is now.
That will change, that has changed, yeah.
They're trying to do their own engineering.
There's, there's not a lot of large trees, so it feels, and there's, there's setbacks on some of those houses, that it feels a lot bigger, and so it just feels like a, a street where I've driven along that road a lot, I used to have friends that lived up there, I'd go visit a lot, and I catch myself, you know, going through there, and, and catch myself going, drifting above the speed limit, and it's just one of those things where, because of the nature of the layout of the road and how wide it is, it feels like you should be going faster than, than what the posted speed limit is. So I think, I, I kind of, I get your point on the, let's try it, it's easy, we can put a sign up, but I think without doing some of the actual narrowing measures that Kevin's talking about, I don't think we're going to get the real results that we want long-term.
And I think it would be wise, it'd be physically responsible to, to do that engineering at the same time we're doing the resurfacing, like, you know, I don't necessarily think we have to go in right now and do all the engineering, but I think there's some fallacy in, in saying, well, this one thing isn't going to work in and of itself, so we can't do it, and this one thing won't work, well, yeah, but we're, I mean, we're talking about maybe a more comprehensive approach, and this is just a start.
Pat, next, please.
And I guess this question would be directed more to Chief Jenkins, and that would be in terms of, how effective are emphasis campaigns in a neighborhood like this, where we actually do have a police presence, and then we do do enforcement?
And we know with schools starting soon, we're going to have emphasis, and there were schools on, so...
So I guess I'm just, that's an, that's coming from ignorance in terms of how the effectiveness of this would be.
They're, I think they're effective for a relatively short time, that we're able to provide that, that focused enforcement. I know I previously worked for a city that had a dedicated traffic unit, and so we could send out traffic officers to work traffic on problem streets all day long, and that's, we don't have those resources, so we're a little bit limited in what we can do, but we can do, still do some selective enforcement, particularly when there's a change, that's a good time to, to do those things, and that's part of the education, too, with the public. But, you know, I, I think we can definitely try to do some more focused enforcement on Harvest. Again, we're, we're limited on the time we can spend there. I know I've talked to officers personally who have gone up and sat for an hour and not had a car over the speed limit, so a street like that, I think the, there's not a specific time period where they're speeding, at least we haven't heard of any, where, like by the high school, we get complaints there, and so we can go up there before school and after school, and that's when the problem is. But a residential street like Harvest, it's a bit more difficult to pin down that time to get staff there at the, at those times. So we're just kind of hitting this when, when we go there.
Nathan?
Thank you.
I think this is a pretty in-depth conversation, Brandon, I know you've been working on this a lot, and it's really appreciated, but I think it's been brought up by the mayor, and Kevin, I, Kevin's the expert on this. I would love to see what his ideas are, and...
Hey, we can have it for the next council meeting.
Yeah.
Take a look.
That's a discussion item?
Yes, a discussion item.
Your workload, sorry.
Okay. Is there any other new business to come before the council?
More for Karen.
Seeing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
The second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?